Okay, we'll bring tonight's city council working to order as our motion tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to add to the agenda. I like the flip-flop item three and four, put item four hemp-based edible THC ordinance three and then the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget four.
Yeah, second it.
Motion being second, any discussion? Hearing none to motion all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion passes. So, item, new item three hemp-based edible THC ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July first, twenty twenty-two, certain hemp-based edible cannabis products containing THC became legal in Minnesota. City Attorney Christine, Chris Nelson and Christine Benson updated the council on July eleventh on the impacts of this legislation. They specifically stated that the law making edible cannabinoid products legal did not prohibit cities from regulating their sale. City Attorney Nelson reported that there were very little restrictions other than the age needed for person, purchase and the dosage. Nelson noted as it now stands, any business could offer these products. Nelson also reported that liquid THC was legal as long as it was considered a food product, but it was not legal in a vapor form. City to council discussed the following options at their August first, twenty twenty-two work meeting to address this issue. The options included amending the city code to regulate the sale of THC edibles or enact a moratorium temporarily prohibiting the sale hemp-derived THC food and beverages in the city in order to provide additional time to study the matter. Council directed staff to proceed with the preparation of an ordinance or ordinance amendments to address this item. Items attachments one and two in your packet or code sections proposed for amendment for review and discussion at our work meeting tonight. This time I'll turn it over to City Attorney Chris Nelson who prepared the ordinance. There are two different sections for amendment to change this in our city code. The first one is chapter eighteen, article six, other business license and background checks, which adds this to the number of things that will be licensed. And number two is the proposed ordinance amendment itself, which would be a new section of the ordinance. Chris?
Thank you, Jack. Mayor and council members, as the city administrators stated, we're in this position and all cities are in this position simply because the legislation that was passed legalized these products, but didn't really put any restrictions or any type of regulatory regime in place to govern their, their sales, their use. The only restrictions that exist are the fact that it has to be in a certain type of package, have a certain dose limitation, and be sold to people twenty-one years of age or older. However, if those restrictions are violated, there's really no enforcement mechanism to do anything about it. Unlike tobacco products or alcohol products, which are, you know, have the same types of restrictions on them, there are enforcement mechanisms, as the council is well aware, if somebody sells alcohol to someone who's underage, there are license implications. If someone sells tobacco products to someone underage, there's a license implication. Unless the city takes action, there's really no implication with these products because the state didn't impose any standards. So, based on the previous council conversation we had, we drafted the attached ordinance amendments, which we can walk through tonight and wanted to get the council's input on them, answer any questions the council may have, and understand that by no means is the council required to enact a licensing ordinance. However, if, if you want to, this is sort of the, the general structure we'd recommend and it's, it's familiar to business owners because it is modeled on the tobacco licensing ordinance. So with that, there's the proposed amendment to article six in the ordinance. This one is fairly quick to discuss. All that occurs with this amendment is it adds a cannabinoid license to the list of city business license. So it just identifies that if you're selling cannabinoid products in the city of East Bethel, you're required to do so with a city-issued license. And then we have a proposed addition to chapter eighteen, which is article eight, and this is the regulation for the sale of cannabinoid products in East Bethel. And with this, you know, we start with the purpose section for the reasons why the city would be enacting a regulatory regime here. And it's to ensure that the state standards are complied with and to allow for compliance inspections. That's not something that we would inherently have the right to do, but if it's a licensed business, they need to comply and they need to agree to go through compliance checks. So that's, that's part of it. As the council may remember, the Board of Pharmacy is authorized by the state as the overarching regulatory regime for this new THC law. However, they're not out there doing compliance checks. They're not doing, out there doing anything to verify that the products being sold are compliant with state law, legal and correct dosages or sold to people twenty-one years of age or older. So we go into the definition sections after the, after that, and this largely matches the languages that exist within our own tobacco ordinance or state and federal law, for example, how hemp is defined, what a cannabinoid product is. And one of the things that's important to note here is the way we've defined this, it doesn't include CBD. CBD, you know, we've all seen the, the shops and the oils and the supplements that people purchase. That doesn't have any THC in it, which is the active ingredient in marijuana. It's all been removed. It doesn't exist within CBD. So that wouldn't be subject to licensure. So if a store is only selling CBD and has been for a period of time, that's not required to be licensed because they're not selling a product that has that THC content. So with that, we get into the, the licensing and this is entirely based on what the city has in place for tobacco. We're talking one-year terms, they reapply, largely the conditions for renewal, revocation, transfer, those are all the same with the tobacco ordinance. So that, you know, the reason you can revoke cannabinoid license would be the same reasons you can revoke, revoke a tobacco license. You know, illegal activity, convictions, selling to people underage, failing compliance checks, things of that nature, and create certain criteria for, for applicants before they can be, be approved. You know, there'd be that background check and a license fee, which we'll, we'll talk about in a little bit because that's the, that's one of the key decisions the council would have to make if they, if they move forward with the licensing structure. So you see on page five, applicants must comply with and consent to the background check provision. That's a, that's a key part of that. So the background checks are the same for tobacco and cannabinoid, but you know, they're required to, to comply. Again, same, same basis for revocation and denial. One of the key aspects of this under prohibitive acts is no vending machines. You know, we all remember the old cigarette vending machines. That's not going to be allowed for cannabinoid products. If you don't enact a license regime, there's nothing that would prohibit vending machine sales of these, these products. No self-service merchandising. So that means, you know, when you go to the convenience store and the cigarettes are behind the counter, similarly, that all the products would be right behind the counter here unless it's a store that's only open to people twenty-one years of age or older. So it's, it's the same in that you can't go in and grab a pack, no sampling, anything like that. It's behind the counter for purchase only. And that's reiterated in this storage provision as well. And again, we copy the state law on, you know, you have to be twenty-one, no self-checkout, hours of operation, all things you would, you would see in, in alcohol license or tobacco license. We, I have this highlighted provision that you may see in here. It talks about discounts and pricing discounts. So that, that's an option the council would have. You don't have to include that provision, but it basically says you can't discount these items or offer punch cards or any, anything like that that would discount the, the items. And then again, really the, the key provision here with licensing and this type of thing is the agreement that inspections and compliance checks can be done. You know, that's, that's something that exists within both our alcohol licensing and tobacco licensing. So the sheriff can go in, ensure that the products being sold match all of the state criteria, go in with someone under twenty-one, attempt to purchase. If they fail, you know, it's a violation. And the penalties for that violation, the administrative penalties anyway, entirely up to the council's determination, but we just filled in some things there. Five hundred dollar fine for first and a license suspension, thousand dollar fine for second violation, three thousand dollar fine for third violation and a suspension period. And, and again, you get multiple violations. There's no reason that license would need to be renewed for the next, for the next year.
How do those fines compare to tobacco violations?
I believe they are the same, but the, the suspension periods are longer, but you can set those at whatever you would, you would like.
Okay, thank you.
And then one of the key provisions here and, and something that I've added that not a lot of cities have added, but I, I think they will eventually is this proposed amendment to section forty-two twenty on the last page. And this, this makes it a misdemeanor in the city to not, to sell a product without a license or sell a product in violation of, of this. And this is really the hook and incentive to get people licensed and to make sure there aren't resales and things like that. You know, if you don't have a penalty for people selling on products without a license, which they're doing right now because we don't have a licensure regime and there's no state-level licensure regime, we need a hook in order to get them to, to sign up for a license. And this would make it a, a city crime to sell without a, without a valid license at the, at the misdemeanor level. So I, I thought that was an important provision to include to not only deal with resales, but also to encourage people to sign up for the, for the licensing regime. So that's a brief overview of the THC ordinance. Again, it's largely based, very similar to the tobacco ordinance. It's just modeled for the newly legal product that we have in this state. One of the nice things about this too is it can be easily amended in case that there's any change to the state's marijuana laws. And if that were suddenly legalized, you know, this would, this would allow the city to quickly adopt a, a regime to deal with legal cannabis as well, so.
I have a couple of questions to start off. On page seven, I'm not sure what section it is, but it's, it's talk about age verification. It says verification is not required for a person over the age of thirty. And it says, you know, that's not a, a defensive violation. Why would we say, why would we put that in there, I guess?
We don't have to put it in there. It's typically what we include with a tobacco license. So I think that, that's why that language is, is in there, but it's certainly not something we have to include. You know, it's, as you stated, it's, it's not a defense. You know, we could just require verification as needed for all people, but that's an easy amendment.
Well, I suppose if it came up to question, you'd say, well, how did you know this person was over thirty?
That's very good, yeah.
It just reads what tobacco reads.
It just seems like, yeah, if that's what the tobacco reads right now, that's fine. Down a couple, under hours of sales. Why are we restricting the hours of sales?
You don't have to. It's.
And here's the reason I bring it up. You know, if we have a twenty-four-hour store and, and that store's got to keep track of not selling it there in a certain period, it's kind of a, I don't see a reason not to do it. You, you sell tobacco, you know, all hours of day, so.
And I, I think, and again, this is a first draft. We can, we can change that. But I think the, the idea was that it's an intoxicating substance, just like alcohol is an intoxicating substance. So we were limiting the hours of sale to more closely match what's, what's allowed for alcohol.
What is allowed for alcohol?
That's probably, I don't know if there is restriction on alcohol.
Well, there's a, I, I believe there is a restriction on the, on the sales for alcohol. I'd have to look up the ordinance.
The cutoff, I believe, is what, one o'clock on the weekends? And sometimes it's been extended, but that's under special circumstances, so.
And that's for on-sale. I think our off-sale is earlier. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my question would be that in some stores, they do sell the three-two beer. I don't know necessarily if East Bethel or not, but for the twenty-four-hour stores like you're talking about, Steve, would, would that?
Speedway on sixty-five is a twenty-four-hour store.
Yeah, so can they?
Just like tobacco is, if they had one of this, this license and we restricted hours, they would have to.
Yeah, but, but along with the lines of alcohol and three-two beer, do they have restriction on that versus?
And quite honestly, I don't know what that, why they have a restriction on that either, but.
I, I don't know. That'd be, I guess one question to get an answer to.
I think, you know, there's nothing in the, there's nothing in the licensure ordinance right now that would restrict or attempt to restrict the biz, the type of business that's selling these products. So it could be at a convenience store so long as the store goes about getting licensed. But, you know, the, the hours of, of sale provision right now would apply to everyone's hours of operation, regardless of whether you were a twenty-four-hour store. So that's something that the council can elect to remove or, or keep in place.
I mean, I mean even like the bars, right? The bars are open to one or two. They sell cigarettes to one or two, but they have to stop selling this, whoops, stop selling, you know, cannabinoids. I, I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to find out the reason why.
I, I think the idea was to match off-sale alcohol.
Okay, rules. Anyone else have thoughts on the hours off for off-sale?
No, I, my thought is what if, what if we just do nothing and just let it be and under the state, the way the state is doing? And my thinking is what happens if we do this and then somebody sues us and says we're exceeding the state standard? And then the state come, or the judge comes back and says, yep, you're, you're good. Because, I mean, I walked through the state fair and they're just with police standing around. People are lighting up marijuana cigarettes right there, you know, right, so nobody's doing anything to anybody anyways, even for actual marijuana smoking everywhere. So what if we do nothing? Or, and what are the chances we could get sued for imposing rules? And I don't think anything would happen until somebody got fined.
Well, well, my question wasn't so global as whether we have the ordinance. My question was on this specific thing about hours of sales. If anyone had any comments on that.
So I'm not allowed to comment on the overall thing?
You can, but I'm asking you a question if anyone has any other comments on this.
And I, my answer was no, I don't. I, I wanted to ask about this thought I was having.
We will, we will. I just want, we're going, I'm just pointing at this one item, so why it was in there, so. Then the other thing, Brian, you brought it up, was the fees on this fees code. So that is the fees that we have for tobacco?
I'm gonna have to check those. I think those are much higher than their fines, much higher.
I thought it was two fifty for the cigarette that we just did for sixty-five.
First offense was two or two fifty, I believe that's correct.
Well, and the other, and the other question is, it says the city shall impose a civil fine of five hundred dollars. That means we have no levity in changing that. It is five hundred dollars.
Correct.
And we have to, we have to.
Correct.
And I don't think the tobacco ordinance is that way.
No, it was, it was amended probably about eight or nine years ago to reflect some of those concerns. Do you want this to match the tobacco fines?
That'd be my preference. I, I think that was the idea, but.
We could start with that and.
What's, how's it any different than the alcohol?
I was gonna ask that. What's the alcohol fines?
I'll have to double-check that too. The alcohol ones were a little bit higher, but the first offense isn't that much higher.
Yeah, I think it was like a hundred fifty dollars.
You know, somewhere along in there, so.
So. So I guess my suggestion change shall to may impose.
And the reason, you know, the reason it said shall was, I think, just because the, the city has had a, a standard practice in, in uniformity of imposed fines, so, but that can be, certainly be a may and I can make that change right now.
I have no objections being shall because, you know, there have been times where council didn't really apply a penalty even on the second offense. And that, that was frustrating when we go through all this work and.
And then we said and discussed it.
Years ago, but, you know, backed off on doing something. And so there was no teeth to it. And I, I think that was a year we had like six or seven violations that year. So I have no problem saying shall.
Yeah, either way.
But not five hundred bucks, you know, whatever it is, so, whatever. So, but we can, I think, let's see that, the, the fee stuff again, once we know what the other two are.
We will match the tobacco suspension and, and fines with the revision.
I'll furnish you that information tomorrow.
So to talk briefly about the overarching purpose, the goal with this is certainly not to exceed state-level restrictions or state-level requirements. This is simply an enforcement tool to enforce the, the state requirements because the state did not adopt any type of enforcement tool, nor did they adopt any language like they have with tobacco or alcohol mandating that municipal governments have a, a enforcement regime in place. So the idea was to create a regime similar to tobacco, similar to alcohol, that would impose the, the state standards on stores that are choosing to, to operate this. So this doesn't go beyond the state regulations in any way. It just enforces the state regulations. So there's that. As, as far as, as doing nothing, that's certainly the council's prerogative as well. You know, it's a complete policy decision about whether or not the council wants to adopt something or, or doesn't want to adopt something with regard to cannabinoids. However, if you do not adopt anything, there's no way to have any type of enforcement whatsoever. This would be the only way to go about enforcing any of the state-level rules because the state has been fairly open about the fact that they're not going to enforce their own rules on this. So that could change at the next legislative session, but that's, you know, months, months, months away.
In the meantime.
In, yeah.
Didn't we discuss also that if somebody moved in and started selling these, if we didn't have something in place, it would be almost impossible to go back after the fact and enforce them?
It would be for a moratorium. With this though, if, if someone has already started selling, we're declaring this a regu, regulated product within the city, so they still have to get licensed, but if.
So it was just a moratorium when we talked about that? Okay.
Yes, because they, they would have grandfather rights because the moratorium's done under the zoning ordinance. But everyone would have to get licensed if the city did adopt, adopt this regime, so. But no, the intention is not to go beyond the, the state in any way. It's just to, to match the state and enforce the state's rules.
So kind, kind of along the lines, a hypothetical question. Say we pass this and it turns out to be a terrible thing for the city and we come to the realization that we don't want THC products to be sold in East Bethel, can the city revoke this ordinance and ban the sale of THC products?
It theoretically could ban the sale of THC products, but I would probably state that that's unenforceable. The reason why is that the, the state and the federal government declared hemp-based THC products to be legal products. So the city would essentially have to make them illegal. And going about enforcing that at, at a city level would not only be very time-consuming, it would also be very expensive because we'd have to, you know, test all these products, determine what they are. It, it would just be very, very difficult to do. So theoretically possible, practically no.
Okay, well, just a hypothetical I thought needed to be asked.
And then with, with regard to a lawsuit, I think there, if there were going to be a lawsuit, it, it wouldn't simply be East Bethel. There'd be, at this point, dozens of, of cities that might be subject to, to a lawsuit because more and more cities are, are passing a licensing regime. However, I think the, the law is fairly clear that we have the rights to do this so long as we make the proper findings as to why we're going about doing that. And that, that's what the, the purpose section is, just to say that this is, you know, different than selling Snicker bars or, or things like that. This is a intoxicating substance that up until recently was totally illegal at the state and federal level and is to a degree still illegal at, at both, both levels. It has, you know, potential adverse effects for, you know, roads, health, things like that. So I, I think it's a, a product that's eligible for, for regulation under the state law on that. And so I, even if there were a lawsuit, I think it would be difficult for the lawsuit to be successful. If there were a lawsuit, for example, on a moratorium, I think that'd be much more probable that that lawsuit would be successful.
So this draft, there's no restriction in here in terms of which businesses can sell, they, just that they have to have a license?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the state didn't.
So I thought there was some discussion at one point of just making it.
Yeah, that was.
Only ones with tobacco licenses get this or something.
If, if that's something that's desired, I think that's something we can do. However, I, I wouldn't limit it to just tobacco. I would probably limit it to tobacco and what are defined anyways, exclusive tobacco stores and exclusive cannabinoid stores. Because we do know there are stores popping up that sell only these products. And, you know, they're, they're essentially a, a exclusive tobacco shop except they don't sell tobacco. One thing that is sort of imposed from the state is the fact that they've determined that liquor stores can't sell these products because liquor stores can only sell under statute fourteen distinct defined products under the statute and aged has determined that cannabinoid products are not eligible for sale at liquor stores. So you won't see liquor stores carrying these products.
So we, but we don't have to have that because it's a state?
Correct, correct.
On pricing and discounting, do we allow tobacco, we allow tobacco to be discounted? Because everybody sets their own prices and we allow alcohol to be discounted. Was there a process criss-behind not discounting them?
I, I think that it was just to show the council an option, whether or not, and I think that's why it's highlighted. It's, it's a provision in there that would be entirely, entirely optional, but, you know, some places have wanted to include it. So I wanted to include it in the draft for discussion.
Did Bloomington pass theirs? Do you know?
I don't know if they've passed theirs because I think they, they require two readings, if I remember right, before they, they pass. But I know that.
They're pretty close. They've got to be.
And, you know.
There's a store going up already.
Yeah, and St. Cloud, Golden Valley, Bloomington, Stillwater already had something in place that they, they think is applicable to this. So, you know, the, East, East Bethel wouldn't be alone. I, Marshall is, is another one. So there, there are many cities that are doing that. That's just to name a, a few. I think I, I'm aware of at least twenty.
I don't think we need to have, personally, I think it's up to the retailer what they want to charge for, for product.
Why, why would you want to try to?
Yeah, I don't think we need to get into that, so.
If it's not a tobacco ordinance now, I think that's consensus to take that out?
That's fine. Question on the liquid THC. I think in previous discussions, there was some question about where that could even be sold. And I see that the only place it is addressed, addressed here, as far as I can tell, is in the definitions edible cannabinoid product. And it states that it's intended to be eaten or consumed as a beverage by. And it states that it's intended to be eaten or consumed as a beverage by humans. So, how is the liquid THC products addressed? Is that something done overseen by the state, or it's something different, or?
Well, this definition of edible edible cannabinoid product comes directly from the the state statute. So, in that sense, we're we're marrying the state statute. As far as commonly referred to, one is, what, THC seltzers? That those are the type of products that could be sold under this ordinance, any anywhere that has a license to sell those products. I know breweries are are making these these products now. Interestingly enough, despite the fact that they're made by breweries, if they don't contain any alcohol, they can't be sold at liquor stores. So, under this ordinance, those type of products could be sold anywhere that has a license. However, it couldn't be sold at a liquor store.
Well, if it had liquor in THC.
You can't.
So, it, okay, but so, un- under this, it it still would be able to be sold by anything that has a license. So, say, for example, grocery, not grocery, gas station that has behind the counter, they would still have to have these products behind the counter.
Correct, correct. The only, under this draft, the only place that couldn't have, could have the products not behind the counter would be stores that only only persons twenty-one or over could enter.
The definition of a liquor store is still a standalone, off-sale liquor.
Correct.
Where do bars fall into this? Are bars going to be able to sell these things if they apply for a license?
Theoretically, there's a circumstance in which potentially a a part of a bar could sell it, but not the off-sale portion of of the bar, because the off-sale portion of the bar is governed by the exclusive liquor store statute.
So, if it's on sale only, they should be able to sell it?
If they're licensed.
If they if they have one, so. It's just the off-sales that can't do.
Off-sale, they can't, so they have two doors, one's off-sale, one's on-sale, this is going to get complicated. For everybody, I mean, not just for us, for everybody.
No, because they can do it, if they're already, if they have on sale, they can sell.
If they're already having, yeah, they could sell it.
And, you know, you've seen the convenience stores that have the single checkout with the.
Yep.
Sort of divided.
Real one, yeah.
Yep.
That's exactly the type of situation that that they'd be in.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions?
I think we addressed all mine.
I'd so like to see us go through and license these.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I I really would, at this point. It's the penalties are really the only thing that we don't have.
So, I think, I think, what we talked about, we're going to remove the section on the discounting. And then we'll make the penalty section consistent with the tobacco and or alcohol penalties. Show us what both those penalties are.
The only other one is hours of sale, and I'm going back and forth on that. But you're right, if we have convenience stores, I think it's gonna.
I think it's going to inconvenience, it's going to confuse people, and.
Especially if bars can have it, it gets really, I think we need to take that out, too.
Well, if it, yeah, I mean, if it was, if if they're selling, if it's on sale, off sale bar, they're used to not stopping sales.
Well, they're they're open till one o'clock, but.
Because they're, because, remember, these, the stuff has to be behind, have to be behind bar, too, so.
I think, I'm okay with taking the.
It's almost like pull tabs, you know.
I'm okay with taking the hours of sale out.
I don't know, yeah, I'm not sure what it adds.
I have a question on the, regarding the compliance checks and inspections. So, the city's going to go designate somebody from that works back there to go with a police officer to a place to check for compliance, right, or wrong?
No, the sheriff's department will be the compliance check, and they use their own people to go.
Well, that's not what this says, so.
So, traditionally, with alcohol and tobacco, that's the way it works, nobody in the city goes, it's the sheriff's department. And they do those annually.
So, then this should change, and so does our, do you, does anybody know, does our sheriff's department have a method to test? I guess it's the, they're going to be checking for the levels of the, because it's a certain measurement that they can have, right?
It is a certain measurement that that they would have. In all probability, they will not be testing degrees of of THC, they'll be looking for labeling. You know, making sure that people aren't selling products that appear like candy, because because that's a requirement. You know, you see certain things that are like imitation Oreos or imitation Skittles, you know, that's illegal under Minnesota law. So, that'd be the type of thing they're looking for, and they're looking to ensure that the dosages are correct. So, five milligrams per individual dose, fifty milligrams per package. And they'll also be going in likely with someone like twenty years old and seeing if they'll sell without a ID check. So, it'd be similar to tobacco in that way.
And it does state in it, persons used for the purpose of compliance checks shall be supervised by law enforcement or other designated personnel.
It does say the city, so I think that should be removed.
Well, the city.
But they're as agents of the city, right, so.
But you're talking about the additionally, from time to time, the city will conduct inspections, is that the line?
My my understanding of reading this is that the city shall do inspections of the products. Compliance compliant checks as far as age will be conducted with supervision by law enforcement.
In in.
That's my interpretation.
The way the way this is intended to be is that law enforcement will do all of them. I I think I use the phrase the city in the sense that law enforcement is working on behalf of the city in this sense, even though it's a a contract with Anoka County when they're in East Bethel doing law enforcement, they are agents of the city.
Can we clarify that?
We can.
Okay.
I'd like, yeah, thank you.
I I think it may be, might be also worthwhile is is to query the sheriff's department, ask them how they intend to do compliance checks. I, to me, the biggest thing is the age, the age aspect.
I I will say, you know, a a lot of products are being sold in in Minnesota that were illegal before the new law. A lot of products are being sold that are still legal after the new law. And one of the reasons for that is is probably the fact that the state isn't, doesn't have any enforcement mechanisms for this. So, it's it's not unusual to go into into a store selling products at this point and see dosages that are much higher than the five milligrams, packages that exceed the fifty milligrams, packages that appear to be candy, things like that, so.
Question of curiosity on compliance checks, I know we do them for tobacco, but does the sheriff's department do it for alcohol as well in bars, liquor stores?
Um, I, they certainly do it in in bars, I I believe they do it across the board.
Yep. They could do every license once a year.
I think they do both.
Okay.
Every one.
Yeah, the only ones I've seen come in front of council was for tobacco, so.
We haven't had a liquor violation, no, we did have a liquor violation at Route sixty-five, didn't we?
Yeah, here, but we've only had like about two in the last six years.
Yeah, we haven't had too many liquor ones.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious.
We've actually had more for the off-sale and the on-sale.
Right. So, can we bring this back to council next week?
Yeah.
Is that too soon?
No, that's not too soon.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I I will say that that would be probably too soon to pass it with our notice requirements, but it wouldn't be too soon to get final approval of the like.
Can we see a draft, a new draft?
Yes, yes, a new draft, yeah.
Council discuss it, then.
Once the draft is received, we would have to have the notice, end of the paper for publication by fourteenth of September, and it could be on the twenty-sixth council meeting for approval.
Does this require public hearing?
New ordinance, yeah.
Yes.
So, what, so it's going to be published twice, though, doesn't it?
Well, it would be published twice, because it goes in the fourteenth, it'd be the Friday after that, and then the Friday after that. So, that that meets their advertising requirements.
All right. Okay, anything else on this? All right, Chris, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me, enjoy the rest of the evening.
Okay, now on to the new item four, which is the draft twenty twenty-three preliminary budget final review.
Thank you, Steve. Based on inputs from the personnel and finance committees, department heads, and city council, the draft preliminary twenty twenty-three budget was prepared and discussed at the July fifth and August first, twenty twenty-two council work meetings, and at the August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. The remaining schedule for the twenty twenty-three budget is the September twelfth council meeting, the consideration of the preliminary twenty-three budget levy, and the December twelfth council meeting, the consideration of the final budget levy. The preliminary budget is recommended by city council on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, with use seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars of general fund balance, and eliminate the CSO service from the Anoka County Sheriff's Law Enforcement Contract, and propose a levy increase of two point one percent for the twenty twenty-three budget. Pending any final adjustments, staff request direction regarding the submission of the draft twenty twenty-three budget to city council on September twelfth, twenty twenty-two for approval.
Okay, discussion. I I've I've watched the the discussion of this at the last meeting. I like the idea of of eliminating the CSO for one year. I think it's, uh, it's something, even if we weren't trying to shave the budget, it's something we probably should should do anyway, just because of what happened this last year, and see if we really need that service. So, I think I think that's a good, a good thing to do. And then vacation time, I think we already talked about before, made everyone's agreement on changing that policy. I still have, I still have concerns over how we're handling the reserve funds. And so, Mike, w- w- with this proposed reduction, what's it bring our projected reserve balance down to?
Again, the 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 model that we have in front of you has the use of seventy-two thousand five hundred in fund balance. So, that would bring down your fund balance at the end of this year to roughly fifty-two percent.
Okay. And our policy, we have a written policy, correct, on on a reserve, which is forty to fifty percent?
Correct, anything over forty percent is kind of our policy.
Can you say that again?
The minimum fund balance is forty percent of the current expenditures for the general fund.
It's not, it's not listed as a range of forty to fifty?
I don't believe so, I think it's a minimum of forty percent.
Okay, so I thought of, didn't didn't we years ago at one time get, did the state audit? Or or maybe it was our audit had a criticism of the fact we had too much reserve balance?
We, one year, we had about sixty percent, and that was brought up as a fact that it was a little on the high side. But then that was reduced to, to, I don't know, I think we used some purchases, we brought bought some property and things like that that reduced and brought that fund balance down closer to the fifty percent range. The fund balance used to be thirty-five percent, we amended that policy to forty percent. This was about, I don't know, ten years ago. We talked about even making the policy to bring it to fifty percent. We thought we'd leave it to forty percent, because it still gave us a little bit of flexibility, maybe in the use of some of those funds, but it is forty percent.
So, and and we've been over fifty percent in years past?
Yeah, we've historically been over the fifty percent, but like Jack had mentioned, we kind of use that fund balance to purchase property. We've used it to transfer to debt service funds to pay down some debt. We've used it for a number of different things over the years. This would be the first time we've actually used it to lower the levy into a into a year.
Well, it just it just seems to me that i- i- it's, the projection is over what we need. And in in years past, we we've, we've used the money, like you, like you mentioned, on projects. Things that really weren't budgeted, but things that came up, but we just took care of. But it seems to me, we, you know, especially in in a year like this, when we're trying to keep the levy down and sheriff's contract came in so high unexpectedly, you know, we should really be taking care, you know, using more of that reserve and not being arbitrary about it, but, you know, bring it down, you know, if we if we brought it down to fifty percent, what's that, what's that bring our levy down? We talked earlier today, I can't, was it a point nine?
It was point nine percent, correct.
So, if we bring our reserve instead of the fifty-two percent, bring it to fifty percent, we can get our levy down less than one percent increase. We can get to a point nine percent increase.
What's the dollar on that, Mike?
Again, we're using seventy-two thousand five hundred in this model.
Yep.
And then what we initially used is just a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, so.
And to bring it to fifty percent, then, would just be another seventy-two thousand five hundred.
So, we cut it in half, and I think the thinking was, was we're going to use seventy-two thousand five hundred this year. And then again, we don't know what's going to happen in two thousand twenty-four, so potentially leave a little bit, so we could use that to cushion the levy increase in two thousand twenty-four, so.
I got that one, but what is the dollar amount that's left if we do, if we do Steve's proposal and get it down to point nine percent?
Right, I would say at that point, we'd be at fifty percent, then.
Yeah, but my objective is not to get to point nine, was to get to the fifty percent reserve. Because I I I don't see an a a need for us to be collecting all that excess levy to get it over fifty percent when, especially in the past, when we've used the excess for projects.
So, that leaves us with probably sixty-two thousand dollars in the reserve.
In the reserve, we would have roughly three million plus.
Three million.
Oh, not, not, no, of the hundred and forty.
Call it surplus?
Yeah, surplus.
Yeah, so, if we wanted to use, you know, everything to get us down to fifty percent, we would use a hundred and forty-five thousand to minimize the levy.
Instead of the seventy-four thousand.
Instead of the seventy-two thousand five hundred. So, we basically said, in order to get down to the fifty percent threshold, you could use a hundred and forty-five thousand. Then we backed off that, we just divided it in half to save a little bit for two thousand twenty-four. So, that's kind of where we are right now. So, seventy-two thousand five hundred is what we reduced the levy by saying that we're going to use that portion of our fund balance.
I hate starting a year with no money.
It's not starting with no money.
Well, it's not, it's not starting with no money, but it's starting with no reserve.
No, it's starting with three and a half mil, what would be a reserve?
Again, we're projecting to end two thousand twenty-two with three point four million.
In reserve.
But it's the excess reserve that we're using a hundred and forty-five.
Call it surplus.
It's all reserve, it's not surplus, it it's, it's more than fifty percent.
And we can go to forty percent, no.
Yeah, we can go to forty percent, no one argued that.
So, if you do.
You want to go to forty percent?
No, 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 she said we can go to forty percent.
Well, we can, yeah.
I said no.
We used to operate that low before, too.
I'm just saying we could.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And and we could get by with it, too, I mean, if if we had a forty percent reserve, we'd have no problem paying our bills through the year, right?
Well, that's assuming that tax collections come in at the rate they're going now, too, also. That's the problem with going down to the forty. The the.
That's happened, well, that happened two years ago, the county jacked us for two months, right? Because of COVID, we didn't get the the business tax collections.
Yeah, it was delayed for two months.
Yeah, it was delayed, yeah, yeah.
You know, the the other, the other consideration is if we go to, whether we go to seventy-two five or a hundred and forty-five, that's going to affect the twenty twenty-four budget, because that's revenue we're going to have to replace. If not, we're going to go into the year starting automatically with a one point two five or a two point five percent increase. It's just kind of kicking the can down the road for another year.
You're going to have to make that up.
Well, and and again, in a year when the county surprises with an eight percent increase in their contract. we found a couple of ways to bring our levy down that we didn't before. We probably wouldn't have looked at it if it wasn't for the the county's contract coming in like that. And then we identified the reserve and we have we have an opportunity to bring the levy down to less than one percent, which is the first time I've seen ever, so. Might have been one time we did that, but it's been a long time.
There was one year and then there were two years in the
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty eleven, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen period that we actually had a negative reduction.
Yep, that was.
That but but that was for a variety of other reasons.
Yeah, there was a lot of reasons for that. That's that's my thought on it, so. We have an opportunity to soften the blow this year. It's all I've heard, especially from Suzanne, is how we got to help our property taxpayers and.
Absolutely. I don't I don't think we should ever levy. I think we should be proactive in budget for what we think we might need to levy for. What should be in this budget, in my opinion, is a budget, a a line item for the excess 2024 spending that you are just mentioning that we're going to have to levy for, for the increase in pay, the increase in prices, the increase in everything. We should be budgeting for that. We should be proactive. That is my point. We shouldn't have to levy. We should budget for this, plan for it.
We we wouldn't. It's not excess spending in 2024. It just means we're starting out with a higher revenue base. So in order to match what the basic costs are, we're going to have to come up and replace or find an additional a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in revenue so we can start out at zero base on the levy.
Otherwise, you're going to start in debt right away for twenty-four.
Isn't that money constantly, isn't there constantly money being added to that or not?
It's only what we take into our revenue stream, which is currently basically property taxes, which accounts for eighty to ninety percent of our revenue. So unless we have a huge increase in development, which would increase revenue from our building department, property valuations wouldn't kick in to account for that in one year. So that's the only way we could probably cover that. And if not, then we have to increase the levy then to match that for 2024. It's it's just a matter of, you know.
Something else. I mean, we have to balance things somewhere. I mean, we budget for vehicles that we really don't need, in my opinion. We could budget for increased spending. And when bonds drop off, we should be, we shouldn't have to be rolling over that money.
Yeah, we we can budget for increased spending, but we have to find a way to match it with revenue. So generally, that means raising the levy or increasing revenue sources, which that's going to be primarily dependent now on increased development in the city.
Why we don't increase the spending?
Any other any other thoughts? So this is going to be on next week's agenda?
Yes, it's scheduled to be on this for a hearing for the approval of the preliminary levy.
On the twelfth?
On the twelfth.
Okay. Okay, unless there's any other discussion, we'll move on. Uh, number five is EDA.
At the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two EDA meeting, Melissa Wolf and Jason Sacks with Midco presented and discussed the following with the EDA. Potential Midco projects, timelines and costs, fixed wireless service, aid to construction needs and Midco's long-range plans for identifying and servicing those areas in the cities that are underserved or have no service. Based on staff's discussions with Midco, there may be projects that could be considered as a type of a public-private partnership venture, possibly in 2022, definitely in 2023, that will be eligible for American Rescue Plan Fund Grants. Midco has given the city a list of these projects. So one of them is in the Jenkins-Briarwood area. It would serve twenty-five homes. Total cost are a hundred and fifty-one, five twenty-two. The aid to construction that the city would be expected to provide would be seventy-seven thousand dollars of this amount. Gopher Drive, which would be a coaxial cable project for seven homes. Total project cost would be thirty-five thousand dollars. Thirty-nine thousand dollars, aid to construction would be nineteen. And 222nd Street would be fiber to the premises for twenty-four homes. If the city wished to do these, we could enter into some agreement with Midco and they could add this to the project list. Staff also discussed the extension of service to five homes west of Klondike Drive and Edison Street intersection as a possible project, but it would not be able to be scheduled in 2022. Should the city desire to participate with Midco on these projects, the source of matching funds would need to be identified and assessment or other fund recovery procedure would have to be established to reimburse the city's cost for the match. Based on residents' response from a city request to locate areas of internet service issues, the following locales could be potential projects that qualify for grant assistance. Johnson Street between two thirty-seventh and two forty-first, Klondike Drive from Edison Street, one quarter mile west, Bonn Lake Drive and Duran Street. In addition to those areas previously indicated, other locations were identified by county studies being underserved or unserved. And this would be 203rd and 205th Avenue, Third Street and Seventh Street, the Northern Boundary Subdivision, Jackson Street between two twenty-ninth and two thirty-seventh, 241st Avenue and London Street, 245th Avenue and Skylark Drive. Existing and potential grant programs the city could utilize to secure aid to construction funds for the projects listed above would be basically the American Rescue Plan Act. Anoka County has allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each of its twenty-one municipalities. And these funds can be applied for through a grant application process. The communities in the county that do not have a need for broadband funding can pass a resolution that their one hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation be added back into the program's budget for additional projects where support is needed. And any excess dollars that are returned via resolutions will be eligible for secondary projects up to an additional a hundred and fifty thousand dollar matching funds on a first-come, first-served basis. These funds must be spent prior to December thirty-first, 2023. And all projects using these funds will still need to be in full compliance with treasury guidelines and requirements. The county has applied for a border-to-border broadband development program. The county submitted an application to DED in August for approximately three million dollars, but this would focus primarily on fixed wireless systems as a means for service extension. Fixed wireless is an internet option that connects individual locations to the internet via radio signals. In addition to running only approximately twenty-five miles of fiber, this approach would require a master transmitter installed on seven county-owned and three Midco-owned eight-hundred megahertz towers in the county. However, fixed wireless is not without service issues, with major weaknesses being topographical and ground cover instructions and inconsistencies of speeds and speeds being provided at less than one hundred upload, download and one hundred upload. Using this technology would require less initial investment than traditional fiber and could be implemented in the short term. This could be an alternative for fiber in certain areas. The county should receive notice for the grant award denied by early fall. When this is done, too, the city could apply for some of these funds and it is possible, too, that they could be converted to other sources to provide service. Should city council decide to move forward to assist in broadband extensions and improvements, the following basic questions will need answers. The level of the city commitment to the program, the capacity for broadband investment and a means to recover any financial participation, and the next steps in the process and preparation of a work plan. Anoka County reimbursed the city of East Bethel for the Finley Engineering Broad Gap Analysis Report. The amount of reimbursement was fifty-nine thousand dollars. This money came from and has been credited back to the 2022 EDA budgets. This money could be used as a source of revolving upfront funds for gap financing assistance to exist broadband extension and improvement projects for aid to construction. The EDA approved that a recommendation be made to city council to study and consider the city's availability to use matching funds from the city to partner with internet service providers. Should the city decide to commit to broadband investments, staff would also request that council place this item on the October third, 2022 council work meeting to prioritize project consistence with Midco's construction schedule and consider authorization to apply for the Anoka County American Rescue Plan Act grant funds for broadband extension projects.
Okay. Questions?
Lot of red dots on that map.
There are.
Lot of red dots on that map.
Well, it seems like this is moving somewhere, which is good.
I'm excited about it. I'm nervous about those grants, though, but I think we've got them.
Well.
What's a grant fifty-fifty?
The fifty-fifty match. So if we apply to the county for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we would have to match it with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Currently, with three projects that Midco has ready to go, the city's cost, I believe, would be, it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So the county would pay sixty-four of that. We would pay sixty-four of that. Currently, we have the fifty-nine thousand dollars that we got back from the county for the study that we did. It's in the EDA budget. And in certain cases, HRA funds could possibly be used where it provides internet service to low and moderate income homes. So we have two funding sources that we could use for our share of the local match. And it would be my recommendation, when we do a local match, though, that we look at some form of assessment so we can get that money back, so we can keep it revolving to do other projects. And I would recommend that we at least initially look at an assessment project based on the way we do petitions for roads. If the neighborhood has an interest in participating and wants the service, we would have somebody in there getting petitions signed by the residents indicating that they want it. And if enough people sign up, they could be given what the costs were. They'd know what their assessments were. And just based on some preliminary numbers I've run, it it could be possible that, like on a three to five-year assessment, your annual or monthly cost for that would be like thirty dollars a month for the improved internet service. So I think it's very feasible. And if Midco extends it anyway, if we don't participate, they're going to charge the customers quite a bit more than what we would if they could participate in these grant programs.
How would that thirty dollars a month be billed? Would it be billed from the city or from Midco or how?
Well, in 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 my case, I'm just saying this would be assessed to their taxes, so it'd be collected through the tax collection process.
So it'd add three hundred and sixty dollars a year to their taxes for three years or two years or whatever.
A general example.
So and this this would pass the the taste test for assessment because it's providing added value to the property?
We wouldn't have to do that because the residents would be requesting the assessment. They would be requesting the project.
Right, but not everyone's going to request it, but if if we go forward, everyone gets it and everyone gets assessed.
Well, it it would be like our roads and but.
You got to show benefit.
We we can't, we've talked with the appraisal company. We haven't engaged them yet. But, you know, they're they're saying that on on, in general, maybe good internet service where there is no service might add four to five thousand dollars to the value of a home.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm asking, I mean, do we, is there documentation, whatever, that shows that we can defend it as an assessment?
Yes, we can get that.
Is that the only way we can get grants is through the county and doing fifty-fifties? I mean, so could we get that money and then go another source for grants if they're out there?
That's correct. We wouldn't be limited only to the county. And it is anticipated that there's going to be more monies to improve internet access. It's, you know, it's almost become an essential utility for many people. I don't know how many people, since we've ran those little articles and newsletters that have called or emailed and said, you know, I'm thinking about moving because I work from home and I can't get any sufficient in internet service with the sufficient speeds to make it feasible for me to work at home. So it's becoming more and more of a necessity. People use it, too. It was used. It's probably, hopefully, we won't go back to the distance learning stuff that we had during COVID, but I'm sure that there's people that take online classes and things that utilize the internet for that. And, you know, it's becoming uh more a form of the way people get their entertainment. Cable's going, cable subscribers are declining and it's a service that people use quite a bit now to get uh get their entertainment, movies and anything you want to get on there. So it's becoming more and more critical in some areas. And some places, it's just used for making where they live maybe a better location for them. It's just uh it's just it's just a sign of the times that we live in.
And to add on to that, as far as grants go, the last EDA meeting, it was discussed that the federal government is requiring the served area map to be updated almost to a a address location. Where before, you just had a block and if one address was served in that block, then it was deemed that area was served. This new map will be more in-depth. And the federal government is looking to have these maps turned in, I think, second quarter of next year. And after that has been turned in, they'll give a better idea of what what and where is being served. And with that, a new round of grants should be coming out from the federal government. I think they're called the bead grants.
So, uh, Jack and these costs, um, this is all to bring the cable right to the property line? Or is it, who, is it the property or is it responsibility to hook up?
It's fiber to the premises.
To the premises?
And the street.
And and and.
The street and the boxes on the street.
Right. So where I'm getting at is, and and I don't recall, you know, if some of these properties are set back off the road a long ways, does Midco charge to hook the house up or is it part of?
You can get with Midco, you can get free hookups up to a certain amount from the street to the house. And if you exceed that amount, then it's X amount per foot. This is what it was when I hooked up. The thing with Midco right now, I've been on them a little over a year now. And as more and more people get on there, the slower and slower it's become.
Well, I'm just thinking, I'm just, I'm just thinking about what's all included in the cost, so.
Now, that's just to the street. The hundred and twenty is just to the street. And if they don't choose to hook up, then they're not going to have any other assessments if they choose to stay with who they have.
Well, they'll get assessed anyway.
Assess for the street.
If that's the way we do it.
Yeah. But they choose to stay with who they got.
So I I think the important thing now, though, is if this is the route we want to go, we need to start making applications for that one hundred and fifty thousand dollar county grant. And that would be the first step. And then we can work through some of these other processes, too, on how or if we want to to bill or assess. But I think in order to make the program kind of self-sustaining, we're going to have to have some way of recovering some of these funds so we can keep rotating them to use for other grants or matching monies.
Jack, you've done a really nice job on this, keeping this going.
Thank you.
Does anyone see any reason not to bring us to council? All right, we're looking forward to seeing it.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Very good, Jack. Okay, number. I've lost.
Six.
Six. Oh, yeah, EDA, okay. Vacation sick leave, sellback.
City personnel policy allows employees to be paid for the excess of vacation time over two hundred and forty hours accrued by the last pay period in December of each calendar year. For non-union employees, any vacation in excess of two hundred and forty hours at year's end is paid to and placed in a healthcare savings account. City union employees opted out of this plan as requires a payout of half the accrued vacation upon leaving employment be paid to the healthcare savings account. And all eligible accrued sick leave be paid out in the same manner. Due to employees taking little or no leave time during the COVID period of March twentieth through June twenty-first, June twenty-twenty-one, vacation accumulated that. June two thousand twenty-one, the vacation accumulated that could be paid out in excess of two hundred and forty hours has become unsustainable in terms of the city ability to absorb this as an additional cost. City council has requested to discuss amending the city personnel policy to eliminate carryover payments to a healthcare savings plan for any hours over two hundred to forty hours of vacation accrual by the end of the calendar year. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, staff recommends that the city amend section seven dash two of the city personnel policy to make the changes in items three and four as noted in your packet. If this is done, elimination of this policy will eliminate a savings of up to thirty-three thousand dollars for the proposed two thousand twenty-three budget. Council is requested to discuss this item and provide direction to staff as to action on this matter.
So we've discussed this a few times. Are there any other comments? Direction, you know, good staff on this?
I think it just goes to council, I think.
I think we're ready to go to council? Sure. All right, print it, Jack.
All right.
Last item, delivery of city council commission packets.
Currently, city council members, Parks and Planning Commission members and EDA members request a paper copy of the meeting packets or provide those documents by mail, pickup or delivery to their residents. With the proposal to eliminate the community service officer positions from the two thousand twenty-three budget, it has been discussed that the policy of hand-delivery of these materials should be ended. Two council members, one planning commission member and one EDA member received delivered packets. Park Commission members received mailed copies of the packet. Due to the time sensitive nature of the material preparation for city council, planning and to some extent EDA meetings, mail delivery is not an option for these packets. City council members are provided laptops for electronic access to online packets. The EDA, planning and parks commission members use their own computers to access online materials for their respective meetings. There's an average of six packet deliveries per month. This service requires an estimated three hours per month and sixty-five driving miles to make the deliveries. CSO times for these deliveries took approximately four percent of their contract time. Staff is seeking direction from council as to procedure for regarding this matter on whether to stop the delivery of the printed copies.
How about we hear from the two council members who get delivered packets? What's their thoughts? I don't even know who.
I get a packet, but I come and pick it up.
Okay.
I have no problem. I was picking up packets and then suddenly they started being delivered. I, I don't remember exactly when and why, and I may have asked, and then they just kept on.
Okay.
But, and they just delivered one, which I was out of town, so I was kind of thankful, but I have no problem, absolutely no problem picking up the packets. The only thing I guess I would request is a phone call saying it's ready because before I was coming up here thinking it would be ready and it wasn't ready.
Just ask them to send you an email. That's all you got to do.
Yeah, email or.
Email or text. They'll tell you when it's going.
I think, I think maybe the best way is just to, if folks want to paperback it, then come pick it up like they have. Or it'll be on a dais when they get here. Because they can look at it online at home and then have the written one to go through here, so.
Yeah, and I do.
Because then we're not delivering anything, so, and maybe it'll reduce some printing too. I don't know, so.
I do like the paper one. I, I tend to work better off on paper because my.
I, I will say having this tonight because out of necessity was, was kind of nice, but I remember the years of having the big three-ring binder and everyone turning pages, and that's all you heard was paper turning too, so.
On to council.
Is that a plan?
It's a plan.
Good. That doesn't need to go to council, no.
Oh, okay. That just changes.
All right, so we're at the end.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second motion made. Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, that mean, or motion passes or means adjourned. Thank you.